Good evening, everyone. I call to order the June 27 business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton. Present.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Dr. Moffett.
Here.
Mr. Morosky.
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg.
Here.
President Lindy.
Here. Members of the public who are watching online and wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, school community, topic, and contact information if you would like a direct response to any question you might have. The first item we have on our agenda this evening is the superintendent's update, and so I will share the mic with her.
Thank you. The only update today is that we had our principals' academy last week. It was just an amazing experience for our principals. We did do surveys with them, and across the board, 95% to 98% strongly agreed that the academy was beneficial, it was worthwhile, it was a good use of their time. So I think that we're off to a great start. We did focus specifically on what we're calling the ABCs, academics, behavior, and culture. So it was a really positive experience. I just wanted to share that with the board and the public.
Thank you, Superintendent Wright. We're going to move then directly into hearing of the public. So each speaker will have two minutes and direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you'll be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Please again provide your name, affiliation to the district, school community, topic, and contact information if you'd like a direct response to any question you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, we do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel item. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful to all listeners. Thank you. Mr. Hoing, can you tell us how many speakers we have this evening? Or Mr. Wilson?
We have one speaker this evening, virtually.
And I don't have any slips from folks in person. Do we have any in-person? No in-person speakers. So let's hear our one online speaker. Thank you very much.
Ryan Mooney Bullock. Please go ahead. He's working on accepting the invite right now.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
We sure can. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Hey, good evening. My name is Ryan Mooney Bullock. I am a parent of four St. Saint Public Schools students, the executive director of Green Umbrella, and I helped to launch the CPS outside impact team and have been deeply involved in its work to increase equitable access to outdoor nature-based learning and play for every student in CPS. As you all know, at last Wednesday's budget presentation, we learned that there was a recommendation to put a hold on spending related to outdoor learning until further strategic planning could take place. Board members Morosky, Moffett, and Bolton made it clear that they think that plans already underway for outdoor learning should be able to continue while that more detailed planning takes place. And I just wanted to voice my support for that approach. Dozens of community partners have also reached out to the board and superintendent and voiced that approach as well. We expressed our views to all of you and are so appreciative of your responsiveness to our perspective and your willingness to take another look at this important part of the budget. It's our understanding that the budget you're presented with today includes $450,000 approximately for outdoor learning environments and programming, which can be used for shovel-ready projects at 20 schools and for field trips and other educational programming that connects students with engaging environmental education. So we thank you for including that amount in the budget. We're really looking forward to meeting with the superintendent later this summer to share more about our community's vision to connect students and teachers to high-quality, standards-aligned learning experiences in natural spaces and to conversations beyond that around how outdoor learning and investments in sustainability can truly integrate into CPS's next strategic plan. We believe that outdoor classrooms and time in nature are as essential in 2022 and 2023 for students' learning and mental health as remote classrooms were in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I believe that is our only speaker for this evening. Is that correct? Only one. Okay. So we're going to move then from hearing of the public to approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting June 13 and business meeting June 13, please.
Still move.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there any discussion about the minutes from those two meetings? All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. We're going to move then to committee reports. We have one report this evening from the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee.
Thank you, President Lindy. Appreciate it. The board members have received and the community has posted the minutes from our committee meeting, and just want to draw attention to several things as quickly as I might. We do publish with the work of the treasurer's office and staff the monthly reports and review, and indeed, I would encourage people to review those reports and postings. We also will be doing some action items from this meeting tonight when we are passing the final appropriations resolution, appropriations resolution this previous year, coming year, what have you, so we'll be doing that as well. And then we did have some follow-up questions that were posed based upon a draft of the CPP Board budget from their financial folks, and those questions were posed to our treasurer. Our treasurer then took those questions back to the executive director and financial director for CPP. And the action was that it was thinking in terms of, as we move ahead, perhaps some mutual time that the boards spend, and then also, I think, as well, it was first posited that perhaps we might have an extension of the master agreement for CPP. We then also, as we have for now 18 months in a row, dealt with the transportation issues that face us and asked for any new developments as a result of PK-8 and yellow bus and ban other services. In that, we found some new items that are posted, but generally, the real remaining question for us in transportation will be the contract with Metro sorta because the current one is expired, and so we'll be hopefully facing the new year with a new contract with Metro sorta. At that point, too, we know that our legal counsel and superintendent are involved and treasurer are involved regarding that effort. We again asked about the possibility of our own internal bus fleet, so to speak, for both yellow bus and also vans, mostly particularly, I should say, for during the school day for field trips and health checks and career tech efforts. It's my understanding that there's still continuing to have some review about that as to, certainly not the beginning of this coming school year, but something also to be continued to be reviewed, one would hope, as well as we look into other possibilities. We also mentioned, talked a little bit about not only the proposed preschool promised budget, but also talked about the importance and the treasurer shared with us that the $15 million that is dedicated from the levy annually, indeed, we are having such great success that it's more and more money than maybe that has been initially assigned and dedicated. And that being the case, we have to be looking at some of the monies in the reserve, and then we also have to be very cognizant of what each of the partners are actually doing, both the private providers and also CPS, because both CPS and CPP are planning expansion of preschool seats. We then talked in terms of possible policy additions that would emanate from the Finance Committee and then be sent over to policy, one being dated checks procedure and unclaimed funds and what have you. Might be what we don't like to do in policy, which is add policies, but that might be something that indeed that the treasurer and the staff is suggesting, and so that will go to policy. We also talked about ESER funds for this coming fiscal year, as well as knowing that the ESER funds will be here also for the following fiscal year and want to keep a good track on how those funds are being assigned and allocated and maintained as well for the coming year. We did talk also about facilities, particularly the CPS outside that our member of the public just mentioned, and then also talked in terms of the real need as we look at the already committed monies regarding Hyde Park and also Pleasant Ridge, Mama Story, and also Walnut Hills. And right now, we did talk at some length, and I was sitting between two Walnut Hills graduates as we talked about this, talked in terms of the $13 million that was initially thought of as what we would need to perhaps do over at Walnut to expand for very good reason, and the possible review of that $13 million, and as I understand, the administration is conducting that review, and we might hear more. I, as always, mentioned as well the importance of three different school boards agreeing to buy and then preserve and use and keep the Rossin Farmhouse, which is adjacent to our Cannes School, and that's also something that the administration is following up on. And I submit these minutes and hope for approval. I would also like to make sure that the board members and the public have an opportunity to review the addendums, which are both the documents that we talked about posting, as well as the issues regarding transportation and facilities, which are two major issues for Finance Committee. One is has the gathered information about transportation, particularly as it pertains to metro, and some of the concerns that Finance Committee has discovered over these 18 months. And then also, something, believe it or not, and I'm closing out with this, is at least a list of facilities, facilities that were part of the facilities master plan, and the original ones that date all the way back to 2005. So it is also time to start that kind of cyclical look at those facilities as well. So pay particular attention, of course, as always, to our monthly reports. Appreciate the staff's work on that, but also maybe a different, kind of more accessible would be some of this in the addendums in the last part. I think it's page 20 something or other, 22 and 23, again on facilities. And the facilities chart also includes square footage, it includes the year, and we think that it'll be of interest to people as we look. And this isn't even all of our buildings. This is just the ones, the chart is all of our buildings, but the facilities master plan chart is the smaller chart. So I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you very much. Member Bolton, do the motion to accept the committee report, and then we'll have a chance for discussion.
Second it, Wright.
So we have a motion from Mr. Craig.
Keep motion, I'll second.
And a second from Mr. Morosky. Do we have any discussion or question? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please? Or you know what? I apologize. We can do this by vocal acclamation, can't we? Okay, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is approved as presented. So moving right along, we're going to move from item E to item F, which is our first presentation tonight. We're going to hear about the fiscal year 2023 budget from our superintendent and from our treasurer.
Good evening. So I am pleased to share with the board that we were recommending for approval a balanced budget. If you'll skip ahead a couple slides. Excellent. Okay, you can stop here, sorry. So first, the final general fund operating budget we're going to talk about, and then Ms. Wright's going to talk about changes that happened since the last time we presented last week, and then answers to some board member questions as a follow-up, and then we're going to, we'll talk about the annual appropriations resolution. One more. So if you recall, our budget was set based on the fall forecast of $609 million. We're keeping it flat to maintain proper cash balance for the next three years. In addition to that, we talked about several weeks ago about the preschool expansion growing beyond the annual $15 million levy, and so instead of taking that out of the operational budget, we're going to add it to the operational budget to use that unspent cash from the first three years. Nope, go back. Thank you. So that means our new budget target is $613 million. We have to appropriate for that extra value. And then as of this morning, the final report came in just under $613 million. I'm pleased with that. With that, I'm going to turn it over, Superintendent Wright, for the next couple slides.
Thank you. Rob, if we'll go to the next slide. Yeah, we're going to come back to this one. So wanted to start first to pick up with feedback from the last presentation we did. So we had our presentation last Wednesday, and during that time, we talked about more detail for some of the items that we were looking at that time, too, that we were moving from the budget. So the first conversation was around outdoor learning and the details for that. So on these following slides, we gave more of an itemized list of the schools that are involved in the outdoor learning project currently. There are currently 20 schools. Then there's the breakdown for each of the outdoor activities that we're looking at for this upcoming year. So the first slide looks at the building of the outdoor spaces in terms of where the students would actually be in the outdoor environment. Next, Rob. And it kind of continues through there, so it gives you an opportunity to see some of the specifics for what goes into those spaces. So total, as we go just to outdoor learning, and we'll go back to the first slide to look at the other recommendations, you see overall, the first is the capital improvements, and that's about $1,500 per school. The area of teacher development and training, I did have some opportunity to follow up more specifically with the team as well as the outdoor learning partners, and so that's an area where we would be able to look at the way that the service is integrated with our current work that we're doing in the district. And then the programming and support was included in that overall number. So when you look at the outdoor, the creation of the outdoor spaces, along with the areas of the improvements, capital improvements and development and programming and transportation, that gets us to the 449. If we go back to the first slide, there we go. So from our last conversation, there were three recommended updates that we were making. The first is, just because I started by talking about the outdoor classrooms, the initial ask was about $875,000 in this space. $400,000 or $425,000 was to cover break day as well as summer programming. So as we thought through it and think about where we're going next year for summer programming, we didn't think it most appropriate at this point to make that recommendation, not having a full forecast of where we're going next year for summer learning. So instead of the overall $875,000 ask, we did include it through the ESER budget at $449,000 to cover the additional work or the initial work that's already started in terms of outdoor classrooms. And that was based on collective feedback, so thank you for the feedback. The second area that was area of some feedback as well, there was the reduction from the ESER budget of $15 million, a $15 million ask. It started at about $13 million, and it's increased since the initial conversation to $15 million. That included the cafeteria expansion. So for Walnut Hills, we know that we've done the work already around the dome. The dome, I want to say, was right around $8 million, and that allowed us to enclose the space to make it a heated and cooled area so that cafeteria space could be expanded for students, but also still used as a tennis court space also. For the second request, that was about $15 million, that included an additional building as well as additional classroom space. So in having the conversation and follow-up with the team and also talking to the principal, I understand that the initial cafeteria expansion was at some point included in the initial renovation from the school, and so doing follow-up with the school and determining really what feasibly could be done there, that the school really felt that with the cafeteria expansion, that will allow them to feed all of the students, get the students fed at once, and there is a level of understanding for not at this time expanding on the 18 classrooms that would allow the 18 individuals to keep from the ones that are actually traveling right now. So that's where the addition for Walnut comes from, because there was a reduction for Walnut last time. And then the third, and this is one that we had been working on, we did not know that we were really going to be finished with it in time for this particular budget cycle, but we were. This one is to look at updating our doors in our schools for safety, and so that includes our outside doors as well as inside classroom doors. So just to add a little more specificity, we do have doors, as we're going in, the doors, they need repair. And so in going back and reviewing the repair orders and what needs to happen in terms of the repair orders, we found doors across the district that needed to be updated. Likewise, there are several of our schools, and it was really some of our schools that were not, that didn't have updates done to them when we did the renovations. Their classroom doors opened, they opened to the outside, and in terms of just overall safety, and what I mean open to the outside, the doors open so that they're open out in the hallway area. Some of our newer schools have them where they are able to be locked from the inside and outside without locking the door and then leaving it propped and then going back to the door for it to close. So in working with the team, we were able to get estimates to update our outside doors and the interior doors for classrooms, and that's where the additional $570,000 comes from as an ask, and we thought that that would be appropriate or most appropriate at this time for added security across the district. Thank you. Continue. Okay, and I think we're going to, there were additional questions, and then Jen will go back to those.
So one of the questions, there are several people, several board members asked about was the reorganization plan. Excuse my voice. So let me just start off by saying that the reorganization plan is budget neutral. And so while we didn't necessarily trade one position for a position, we did find savings in some of the professional service contracts to help pay for that. So just to share the new cabinet roles that I think you've seen before, but I was asked to put some dollars for you. The new position was chief of schools. The chief academic officer was formerly in an assistant superintendent role, been repurposed. Chief of staff was added to the last, this fiscal year instead of '23. Chief of equity and culture is a former, the director is being elevated to the cabinet level. Chief of student family services is formerly assistant superintendent. Chief of high school transformation, formerly assistant superintendent, repurposed, and then with a new focus, and then a new chief of human resources and talent. Next slide. Then we had some more roles, but non-cabinet level that were repurposed, two directors that were formerly DSLs, and then a principal coach that is DSLs are now down to three DSLs from the six. Two of them are being switched to ESER due to some of the qualifying expenditures. And then in order to help provide better service to our schools and our students, some investments are being made in different departments in terms of adding a special events field trip coordinator, which is an area that we really struggle with, adding a contract analyst to the treasurer's department to help with the return on investment vendor tracking performance, return on investment calculations, a manager of data for the academic side of the house, instructional materials associate, school programs, and Superintendent Wright can talk more details about the purpose of some of these, adding an investigator to the employee relations team, and a director of instructional equity, leadership development pipeline, and a new position for director and evaluation. But once again, budget neutral. I think that was it. Yes. So I know there was other questions that were asked, and we're happy to answer those from the floor as we were able to gather some information to answer you properly.
Yeah, and Jen, before, and Treasurer Wagner and Superintendent Wright, before we do questions, I think what I'm inclined to do here is open up discussion in the context of voting for some of these resolutions. Can you speak for just a minute about what the first resolution is and then what the second resolution is?
Absolutely. So the first resolution is to help, is to close off this fiscal year, the fiscal year '22. We have to file that with the Hamilton County Budget Commission so they can establish that we have enough resources to start the new year. So the way the board gives the treasurer authority to pay bills, whether they're vendor bills or employee bills, is through the appropriations resolution, and it's at the fund level. And so that's the vehicle in which you authorize the treasurer to spend money. They have to be done at the beginning of the year, and sometimes we'll ask you to do amendments throughout the year because we get new grants or whatever, and I can't spend out of that grant until you appropriate the money to do so. And so you'll have revisions throughout the year. We have to do a final one, and then the second resolution is to kick off the new year.
So am I right in thinking that we can go ahead and we could vote on the first one, which is just retrospective? So there's nothing in it we're being asked to vote about that's forward-looking for '22, '23 in that first motion?
That's correct.
Okay. So what I'd like to do then is I'd like to do that first motion. I don't think that will be particularly controversial. I don't think any of this will be particularly controversial, but then we'll go ahead and introduce the second one and then use the discussion period for that resolution to do any questions board members have about the presentation of the budget, and everybody will get a chance to ask anything they want to ask. Okay? So do we have a motion to introduce this first bulleted resolution as fiscal year 2021, 2022, final annual appropriations resolution? Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any discussion on this first resolution? Again, this is looking backwards over this fiscal year that is ending this week. Ms. Bolton?
I would like the treasurer to kind of give us not an update, but some of the, maybe the larger, big stories in this resolution that is looking backward. I mean, give us some ideas of some of the things that you've worked through and some of the high points.
Of course, I don't have a copy of it. Thank you. So I just point out that the fiscal year 21, '22 general fund budget is still at $609 million, so we stayed within our budget allocation. The largest grant in there is Fund 507, which is the ESER grant. It's $306 million to finish out this year. That's not how much we spent, that's just how much was appropriated to spend. It's a three-year grant. Title I is a 572. It's a combination of all the title grants, not just Title I disadvantaged, but neglected and delinquent, parent involvement, immigrant, title, something else I'm not thinking of. So in the fiscal year '22, so you'll see a difference in the two under schoolwide pool. So if you recall, under schoolwide pool, there's, we had a separate fund where we would transfer money from the general fund or from title funds, create the schoolwide pool where Title I schools would spend, they were allowed to commingle their budgets. We are exiting that program with the fiscal year '23. So in fiscal year '23 appropriation, you're going to see it's much, much smaller, and it's smaller because we have to still pay out the level pay from the salaries that were out of the out of those schools in the new year. And that's all I can think of at the moment, but I'm missing something.
Ms. Bolton, anything you want to follow up on?
Yes, I think that's the highlight. I mean, we've got new contracts, indeed, we have the SIR piece, and I think the first thing you said is important for the taxpayers to hear, the amount of money that has been spent and the amount of money that we had planned to spend. You just say that like three more times, the same verbiage.
So we started the year with an appropriation authority of $609 million, and we finished the year at $609 million, but we are spending less than that, yes. Spending within, underneath our authority.
That was only one more time. Did you need two more times?
I need two. I want multiple, I would like Spanish.
Thank you, Treasurer Wagner, and Superintendent Wright for your stewardship of our taxpayers' resources, truly. Any other discussion or questions? Again, this is just the first of these two resolutions. Hearing none, Ms. Wagner, would you call the, just kidding? Dr. Moffett?
Just kidding. Can you explain, can you explain to me, and I'm sorry, trying to help a board member, are we cutting reading specialists on any level in this proposed budget for the next year?
I think we were deferring the fiscal year '23 questions until that resolution came up, is that correct?
That's correct. This is just on the closeout of '21, '22.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so then I think if we're good on discussion for the closeout of '21, '22, Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Great. So now we're on this next resolution, which on your agenda is the second bullet. It says fiscal year 2022, 2023, Annual Appropriations Resolution. So this then is forward looking for this fiscal year, which is going to start on Friday. We'll get a chance for everybody to ask questions, but I do need someone to motion for the resolution, and then a second first, please. Do we have a motion?
No moves.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We have a first, we have a second, now we have a chance for discussion or questions about the proposal. Dr. Moffett, would you like to?
It's me again, it's me again. So can you, can you tell, can you explain about the reading specialists and if we are cutting any of those positions? And then also, can you give it a little bit more detail about the outdoor programming and how it went from 875 to the 449 in the budget?
Okay, so the first is, in terms of reading specialists, that the answer would be yes. At the high school this year, there were 13 reading specialists that were added and 13 math specialists that were added. The plan was to add them to start with. The concern at this point is that those positions were added without a really overall plan for what those roles were to do in schools in terms of moving forward student achievement for reading or math. And also, the second part of that is, one of the greatest areas of concern right now in staffing is high school math. And so there are not additional high school math candidates. Principals really begin to voice concerns about having those positions taken out of the classroom because they don't have anyone to fill them with in terms of backfilling. And so in terms of moving forward, we have, there were, I think, five positions that were vacant of those overall 26 positions, and the others would then have an opportunity to go back to the teaching position that they were in.
So we're not getting rid of people, we're just reorganizing.
Yeah, and so for full clarity, and Dr. Moffett, thank you for asking the question, we've heard loud and clear that we are not looking to lay off anyone. We're not looking to make, we're making sure that any recommendations that we make, that staff members still have a job. And so this is a time, now I can't say that that will always be the recommendations, but at this point in the year, it's May already, is it May, it's June, it's June already, almost July. Right, okay, month away. So the, at this point in the year, would really be important to us to give staff members more time to prepare for that versus it's July and you don't have a job come August. So for example, as we looked at the recommendations that we made around the duplicative role of the school community coordinators, and we have a resource coordinator, we provided notice for that upfront with the expectation that that would not start until next year. And so those that have, we're, you know, not looking to fill those positions if they're vacant, but anyone that's in them, we would keep them in those positions, and they get a year notice that that would happen. So just for clarity and transparency, in any of the positions that we have, we are not looking to remove staff.
Can you, can you talk about the green, I mean, the outdoor, the number 875 being decreased to 449?
Sure. So the initial 875 ask was a conglomerate ask, and that include each of the line items that we referenced on the presentation. The additional 425 that was included in that was for what is called a break day and summer programming. So it's essentially whatever we do with summer programming, it would then encompass that amount versus us giving a separate appropriation just for that for summer school right now. And we have not decided as a board, a board and CEO team with our Treasurer, what direction we're going to go next year in terms of summer programming, so that really opens it up to a larger conversation. The plus with that also in having follow up with the, with some of the partners around it is there was a concern, or there was a misconception that when it came to SIR, if we did not approve it right now, that there wouldn't be an opportunity for it to be approved at all. And so we know as a board team that that's not the case, but making sure that the public is clear on that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any others on your end?
No, I just reserve the right to ask them later. But thank you.
Other questions on the proposed budget for the next fiscal year from other board members? Ms. Bolton?
I appreciate the work, and I don't think there's going to necessarily be a lot of discussion tonight, but assuring the public that this has been a year-long effort as well as in transition and with a new leadership team. So I think this is a remarkable achievement to stay within this effort. I have only some reservations about, just a couple of reservations, but I think I've, I feel pretty good about those reservations. One reservation is that I'm hoping that we are still contemplating, and I see a little bit of a hint of that regarding an internal bus fleet or van fleet. I think being able to do that will enrich the education here almost as much as any number of tutors and specialists can, just because I think it widens the horizons for our kids. So I'm hoping since that's not necessarily general fund, that it's something that's going to continue to be of interest. I'm glad to see the reconsideration of the facility piece because we do have other buildings that are in great need of that initial money as well. The other piece that I, and I'll be persistent about it, is that there were things that we decided to do last year for this year that in that interim year got sidelined or got undone or didn't get done. So I'm, you know, in my persistent priority list, those will reappear certainly, but I am confident about the total of this and confident that the leadership team listened to the input of the board as well as the community, and I think that's a great start. So I'm happy to vote for this, this budget.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other discussion, questions? Ms. Jones?
Just a brief comment. I want to reiterate just a couple of points that Ms. Bolton made. You know, I have to say that I've been, I've sat in this seat now for seven years, and every year budget time, we go through this, this kind of discussion. And I want to say that that's okay, but the bottom line, in my opinion, has always been, let's, let's get, let's get to a place where we can all come to a consensus and agree and move forward, recognizing that there are many things that we have to work on, which is what I'm hearing you say. I mean, I'm hearing some concerns expressed about that. So I would hope that next year, as we begin to move forward, and our Treasurer has heard this before, as we move forward in developing our budget scenarios and all the things that we continue to have the level of dialogue that I feel like has happened within this particular instance, and Superintendent, I really am very grateful, just, just the grasp of knowledge that you, and attention that you've given this being new speaks a lot of where I think we'll be this time next year. So I'm very hopeful about that. So I just wanted to say I appreciate that, and it looks like that, looks like this is going to go through with relative ease. Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Jones. Other board members? Questions or discussion on the budget so far? Seeing none, I have, I'll go ahead and share a couple of thoughts on my end. I think, you know, I'd like to echo Vice President Jones in terms of gratitude for our new Superintendent and our Treasurer. I think that the volume of work and the quality of work that's been done on such a short time period is very impressive, and I'm very grateful. In my conversations with our Treasurer over the last couple of months, I've tended to ask the same basic questions about our budget, and so I thought I would ask them here in public and just give you or the Superintendent a chance to respond to them. The first thing I was hoping could be true is that it's financially sound, we're in the black, it's where we're being thoughtful about our resources, not overspending, being good stewards of taxpayer resources. That was, I think, question one. Question two, I would love to hear you talk about how your look at what's had value in the past has led to decisions for this year's budget. So looking at things that maybe in the past haven't had as big of an impact on student outcomes as you wanted, maybe spending less on that this year, and then things that did have a significant impact on student outcomes, maybe spending more of that this year. So I think just some rigor around where we're seeing value in forming the budget was the second thing. Third was that there's enough wiggle room in there because as impressive as these first few weeks and months have been, our Superintendent really has only been in seat for less than two months. And I have a feeling that two, four, six months from now, you're going to know more, and you're going to have more of an opinion about where you think we need to make some changes. But I think one question I had throughout the process is, are we building enough flexibility into this budget so that over the course of the year, as you refine a strategy, can we still have some room to maneuver? And then last was about community engagement. I think we've had some wonderful town halls, other forms of community engagement, but can you point to examples of how what we've heard from the community has really informed what's in here? Those were, so those four things, being balanced, being rigorous, having some contingency in there to make adjustments, and being deeply informed by what we're hearing from our stakeholders. Could you talk about those just a little bit?
Sure. So I understand you shared that you've been talking to the, our Treasurer about it for a period of time, so I'll let the Treasurer start with that conversation, and then I'll bring up anything at the end.
So the first question is, yes, we're balanced, we're in the black, and it's a very conservative budget according to our forecast. The second question was using value to make the decisions moving forward, what to invest and what not to invest in. And what I've seen change over the past, and it's been growing as our culture has grown, is looking at in terms of, is this impacting students or outside, right? How close is this spend to the student? And that helps us determine some of our priorities. We've made great strides in determining how to look at return on investment, educating people on how to think about that academically. And so we've been able to make some decisions about some contracts that we may not want to renew because they weren't having as big an impact as we had wanted to. Third question on wiggle room, yes, we've built in a contingency, and then we were going to institute a mid-year budget review to see where we're trending under and whether we can pull resources to do something new. There's some ideas about what to do moving forward. And then the community engagement is, was really a kind of a beginning or a rebeginning for us, as efforts in the past have not, we didn't see a lot of public engagement unless we were cutting something they really wanted, and then they would show up, right? So the town halls were an exciting new adventure, and we have plans to continue those, at least five next year. And so hearing people's questions and their concerns kind of helped focus at least my efforts on where to look.
And is there, oh, sorry, Superintendent, go ahead.
No, and I would just echo that. The other thing that I would add is the importance of making sure that we are not just asking for the feedback, but that we take that feedback and use it as a part of our consideration for next steps. And I think that from, you know, the Treasurer and I have worked really, really closely on the budget, but you're correct, I didn't show up here until May the 2nd. So everything that we could do, starting March the 1st, we did that, but it really was not until getting here on May the 2nd that we were really able to make some of those tough decisions and present to the Board a balanced budget. The Impact Tool is important, but I will continue to share that it becomes one piece of information. It's not the only thing that we have to look at when we determine where we go next and how we're getting that information. And the last, I do believe that across the board, we will see a theme across the district of community engagement, community feedback for the work that we're doing. And so while we're, we've discussed having five sessions just around the budget, at least five, just around the budget, and give the community an opportunity to respond to that, and I'm saying all stakeholders when we talk about that, but also those small sessions that we have that may not be specifically budget focused are also an opportunity to capture feedback and to capture information about what we do next. So one of the beneficial parts of that was also, you know, information that was provided from the sessions around the Superintendent search and some of the feedback that came from that as well. So those were just a few additions.
That's great. Thank you very much. I had, I had one follow-up question about the Walnut Hills project. I was, I wanted to make sure I was following everything correctly. As I understand it, this is a change from what the, what the plan had been around facilities there in the past. I also think it's my understanding that the Superintendent's done some good communication with the Principal there and has co-created the proposal that's here tonight. What I'm trying to check for is whether there are going to be big surprises for that school community or not. It sounds like you've worked really hard to make sure there won't be, and I just wanted to give you a chance to talk about that a little bit.
Right. So directly, I have not engaged the school community. I have had, my dialogue has been with the Principal. And initially, when we were looking at the numbers before, just really to get to a point of balancing, that was one of the largest asks that was in the budget, that $15 million ask for Walnut. Conversely, we have several other schools that have just some of the same needs, just needs around facilities, facilities upgrades, facilities changes that they need. And so that was the initial recommendation. After getting the feedback from last Wednesday, doing an additional follow-up with the Principal and really talking about, okay, if this is not a piece that we're looking to recommend at this time, what would be the most amenable to allow us to continue moving forward at Walnut? And the Principal shared with me the cafeteria extension. That from the previous, when we did the previous facilities work, the cafeteria was included in that, but it did not happen at the end of it, there just was not funding to do that. And so there was really an ask from the community, from the Walnut community to make sure that we have the extended cafeteria. I cannot say that there's going to be excitement about still having 18 teachers that are traveling. I'm not, I am not going to insinuate that, but I do think that there is a level of understanding that we're not able to do both at this time, so let's focus on the one that the school believes to be most urgent, and that was the cafeteria extension.
Got it. Thank you very much. Other questions from other board members? Okay, with no other questions or discussions, Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, but before I do, I just, I'd feel remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the Treasurer's Office staff who have a really great year end, just all year long, how hard they worked to help keep us as good financial stewards of the district and create this budget. It's a lot of work, a little bit more challenging this year because of a transition in leadership, and I really wanted to thank Ms. Wright for always having time for me to help get this done. And so I just wanted to share those heartfelt, heartfelt thoughts. So Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's a big one. I feel like maybe we should stop and give a round of applause to our team for just a second. Is that appropriate? Can we do that? Okay, so taking a deep breath, we're gonna move on to number two, which is on here as a superintendent's evaluation. I think we've made some really good steps forward on this, and we'll have other updates coming in the weeks and months ahead. If our superintendent does want to share anything this evening about where we are in the scope of this, I wanted to create a moment for that. I'm also happy to share some things too, but go ahead.
Thank you. So just very briefly, I think that as a board, we have come together on just the overarching areas or objectives that we will focus on. Within the next month, we will come back and add additional feedback to those areas, and then when all data is released, we've given ourselves an initial deadline of September, but when all data is released and we're sure that the data is clear, we will then add our baseline information and then do any of our projections. So I feel good about where we are right now in terms of preparing for, for the evaluation.
That's great. Thank you. I think we had some questions here about whether there was an additional resolution. Do you want to ask one of those?
When we, the position of the chair is that when we voted on the appropriations moving forward, that counted as a vote on the budget?
That was my understanding. Is that not right?
Is that really true?
Yes, but there's also, in the treasurer's report is the detailed budget.
In the treasurer's, thank you.
Yeah.
So we don't need to discuss it in the treasurer's report when we actually vote on the budget, it's in your report?
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
Mr. Craig, does that answer the question you were asking about a different resolution, I think? You're good? Great. Okay, thank you, Ms. Wright. Any board members have any questions about the budget, or about, excuse me, the evaluation? I just think, I think it's a good sign that these two things are happening so closely together, and that we're talking about them in the same board meeting. I think where I hope our board continues to move is that our board focuses on holding the administration accountable for student outcomes that are in line with the aspirations of our community. And I think one of the tools by which we do that is a very strong and clear evaluation tool with our superintendent that focuses on student outcomes. And then we give her and the treasurer the space to decide how to organize the inputs like our budget, like our financial resources, like our staff, in service of reaching those student outcomes. And so I think that the fact that we have a strong budget, the fact that we are on our way to a very strong evaluation tool, I think these are very good things. And they're a very nice segue, I think, to our third presentation tonight, which is on governance coaching. And so I think we have two guests who are gonna join us on Blue Jeans. I think we have Cindy and Ray who are joining.
Hello.
Cindy, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Great to have you.
Great, yeah, great to be here. Ray should be joining shortly.
That's great. For, for people who aren't part of the board superintendent or treasurer or board staff, we had a two-day retreat with the Council of Great City Schools at the beginning of this month. It was open to the public, but we had very few takers. So I don't think that anybody in our home viewing audience tonight, or our in-person audience tonight, other than the board members, the superintendent, the treasurer, and board staff have met Cindy. Cindy, do you want to introduce yourself and just talk a little bit about your organization?
Sure. I'm Cindy Elsburne. I am a governance coach with the Council of the Great City Schools and have been a board member previously from Des Moines, Iowa, spent eight years on the board here, and now coach the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Framework. And I think Ray has joined us now as well.
Hi, Ray.
Good evening. Thank you.
Ray, would you mind just sharing a little bit about your background and your role with the organization too?
I would be happy to. I am Ray Hart. I am the executive director with the Council of the Great City Schools, and I've worked with the council for nearly a decade, right about nine years now. But prior to that, I served in school districts as well. I have supported school districts throughout my career, so looking forward to continuing to work with you. And as the council's executive director, we work with 77 of our nation's largest urban school districts, work with both the school boards, the superintendents, and the senior level staff in those districts across the country.
Well, thank you, and welcome, Cindy. Welcome, Ray. I, I think board members have in front of them a printout of the slide that Rob, if you could put up there. And I want to, sorry if there's a wind sound on my mic, say that everything that you're about to see, draft, that is designed for reaction from you all. It says draft in big capital letters at the top. This is something we can play with together, but I wanted to give Cindy and Ray a chance to talk through it and talk about where it comes from and why it is the way it is, and then we'll open it up for some Q and A.
All right. So after our time together last month, we, we emailed you a snapshot of some next steps ahead. So what you have now in front of you is an overview of what some of those next steps look like and mapped out over the coming months. So if you look at number one, initial board self-evaluation, on July 18th, we'll be completing your baseline self-evaluation using the Student Outcomes Focused Governance Framework. So in that post-retreat email we sent, there were some instructions about completing that board self-evaluation, and then that is something that you can complete and send to us. And then when we come together on July 18th, we can go through it as a full governing team and then come to a consensus on the baseline score for that, and that's part of the continuous improvement process. Number two is around community engagement and outreach, and you'll see there's an A in parentheses there. And this would serve as an initial engagement and outreach process to listen for community vision and values. But one thing I want to mention is that Ben has shared with both Ray and I the summary of the community feedback that you all got when you did the superintendent search process. And after looking at that, we think the information that's been collected there would be quite sufficient in using that to create your draft goals and guardrails. So instead of going back out to the community at that point, what we could do is have you thinking about how to design the engagement and outreach process that you'd use after your goals and guardrails are drafted, so that you're ready to go with that, go back out to the community to share those drafted goals and guardrails, kind of a, that step where going out, see, did we get it right? Number three, that's a current student performance data analysis. That is something your superintendent would put together in order also to write the goals and guardrails, because that is the second component side, side by side with the community input. You would use your student perform, current student performance data to help discover what areas you would like to write those goals and guardrails in. And then fourth would be actually drafting the goals and guardrails. We would look to be doing that by the end of September. And then number five would be engaging in that community engagement and outreach process that you already designed and getting out there with your goals and guardrails, like I said, to see, to get the feedback on them, to see if they are indeed reflective of what, what the community is looking for. And then have, after that, and any tweaks that you'd need to make, there would be the adoption of the goals and guardrails, and then again, communication back out to the community about the selected goals and guardrails. Seven is adoption, adoption of the monitoring calendar, and that is, you know, going to be a very important board agenda planning document. It'll tell you when and how often each goal, an interim goal and guardrail will be monitored throughout the, throughout the cycle. Number eight, that is, once goals and guardrails are adopted, then the board pivots and starts updating bylaws, operating procedures, and any other processes that will assist the board in becoming more focused on student outcomes. And finally, number nine would be adoption of your budget informed, informed by and then aligned with the goals and guardrails you've adopted. So that's just a quick run-through, high-level run-through of what those steps look like paced out over the coming months.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Am I right in thinking that, like, this is the quickest, you all think we could do this well?
Yes. In order to get, yeah, to have the time to really, to really actually put together, for the superintendent to put together that data, for you all to absorb that, have the time to write the, write the goals and guardrails, that takes a little, a little time as well. And then to do that community engagement and outreach after the fact and any tweaking afterwards, yes, I think, I do think that this is, is the quickest. And using your, what you've already collected from your superintendent search process, that, that really expedites it even more. Otherwise, there would be a, probably a longer process on the front end as well.
Thank you, Cindy. I think for, for the rest of the folks here, for the purposes of tonight, I think there were just a couple things we wanted to try to do. One was give people a chance to ask any clarifying questions about this to Ray and Cindy while we have them, just to make sure people follow it, get their comprehension questions answered. And then after that, we wanted to give each person a chance to share feedback on it. Like it, don't like it, here's what I wish would be different, I think it's great as is, but just give each person a chance to share any feedback they have. And then once we've done that, what'll happen next is Cindy and Ray will share any updates to this based on people's feedback, as well as a much more detailed version that they sent me, and I thought was too detailed for us to try to tackle in one board meeting this evening, given everything else that we were trying to do. And we will then vote to ratify that plan at the, at the July 18th meeting. So again, wins for tonight, everybody has a chance to ask any clarifying questions, everybody has a chance to share feedback, so that then Cindy and Ray will send us a version that reflects people's feedback that we can vote on, on the 18th. So with that, do people have questions for our guests? And if not, then Eve, do you have a question?
I don't know if it's a question, but having looked at the board self-evaluation, I think it would be helpful to have further instructions about the scoring. I had to actually ask board staff to help me even get started on it, which is not unusual. I know where to go to get people to help me, but I do think we need some further instructions about how you score that, the zero, the five. So that would be one thing. I think for the public, it might be good if Cindy would define for the public what is meant by guardrails. That it's, I think, I would like to assure the public that that doesn't have any negative connotation. But those are the two comments.
Yeah, Cindy, please, or Ray?
So what I'll say for the board self-evaluation, I am happy to provide more resources and/or, you know, have a phone call or whatever with anyone, anyone who's needing some additional instruction on how to fill that out. So that's, that's the first thing. Guardrails, those are policy statements that are prohibitions on superintendent authority. So it protects values of the community by saying in the form of thou shalt nots. So while you're working toward the goals, don't do this. And so it, it allows, it tells the superintendent what you don't want her to do while achieving the goals, and allows for, for some freedom and in choosing strategy that will get, help accomplish the goals. Ray, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that was perfect. It just maximizes the opportunities, but setting, again, the guardrails for, we don't want you to go outside of these parameters, but within that, to achieve the goals, you are, are open as a superintendent to select the strategies and the opportunities that you might see fit.
And Ray and Cindy, I know we spent two days talking about this, but people watching or people in the building might not have been a part of that. Could you briefly just describe management and governance and some of the differences between them?
Sure. Ray, do you want to take that one?
It's fine, either way. So one of the things that we talk about, and we talked about with the board extensively, is just the role of managing the district, which is essentially the superintendent's role versus providing governance, which is the board's role. One of the things that we discussed during our sessions is essentially the community, the community really owns the school district. So the school district is for the community. The community can't all be represented, and so the community elects representatives as school board members provide governance. But at the same time, for those school board members on a day-to-day basis, they can't manage the district, the staff, the day-to-day operations, and so they hire a manager. That manager is the superintendent. And so the board plays a role of providing governance over the district, but the management, anything that has to do with the day-to-day operations of the district, really falls to the superintendent. And so we really distinguish between the work that is board work and the work that is superintendent work. And this goals and guardrails process that you hear us discussing right now is really designed so that the board understands and begins to do the work around governance of setting the goals. Those goals represent the vision and the values of the school district. And so once you, as a board, understand those vision, vision, the vision and values, you set goals around those, that vision and values, and then monitor those goals, which is really the work of the school board, monitoring progress toward those goals, monitoring interim progress toward those goals, and really ensuring that once you've set that, that vision, the values and the goals of the district, that the monitoring process then takes over for school boards. And then the management, the actual implementation of strategies to impact those goals is the work of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Ray. I think, anybody have any other clarifying questions on the slide and the timeline? Anybody have any feedback on it? Dr. Moffett?
I have a question, well, I have a comment, I suppose. Thank you so much for the time and for the timeline. I asked for this a little while ago, so I'm glad to get it. I really would like to spend some time getting community feedback, more than just, just kind of over the summer or going into the school year. I'm just concerned that parents are gonna be inundated with a lot of stuff at the beginning of the school year, and it may not be enough feedback specifically asking them about goals. I think the other feedback is great for us to get a foundation of what people value, because I think it definitely shaped the leadership that we were to look for. But I really don't want to feel rushed in that we are taking time off of the community engagement and outreach piece to craft goals that are very reflective of what the community is looking for, so that we can hold the superintendent accountable for alignment on what, between the community. So I just would suggest that- So I just would suggest that maybe we be cognizant of the fact that we're talking about this being due at the end of this, of August, which is also the beginning of the school year, it's before Labor Day. I just, I think that maybe we could interject a little bit more time specifically around community engagement.
Thank you very much. I think that makes a lot of sense. Mrs. Weinberg?
So can I just add? I think looking on this, the timeline, there is an additional community engagement that's occurring in September, November. So, so it is twice. So it'll be in the summer and then again in the fall. But you're asking for more than that?
No, I, what I, what I heard, and I could be incorrect in my analysis of it, but I heard that there was, the feedback was given to them from the superintendent search and that they were potentially negating the second one, the second, the B session because of using of the superintendent, community engagement piece that we, we had done as a substitute. So I was saying, let's not substitute that, let's actually be intentional with collecting data. And I would actually, again, it could be in tandem with what we're already doing, but I just don't want us to say, okay, one session is enough, and let's be intentional since we're doing that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Weinberg. Thanks, Dr. Moffett. Any other feedback for the guests on the proposal here? I think certainly one proposal to extend that community listening at the beginning so that it's a little bit longer and further past the first day of school. Mr. Craig?
I would just add in that we may want to make sure to adjust the timelines to match up with the cycles for when, for instance, we get data on student results. Because I don't know that we can necessarily look at performance data by the 31st of August, because we won't have it, potentially. So we would hope to, and we'd hope to be able to do some of these things. And I think that may be just something we have to adjust, similarly working through budget pathways there. I think the goal for next year's budget, Jen can certainly, or Treasure Raker can certainly correct me, but is to produce a more ongoing process that's evaluating throughout the year. So we may actually have some information for next year's budget that'll be reflective of outcomes and maybe a better measure of how we can look at it. And so I just think making sure we're paying attention to those timelines that might have to fluctuate based on when we get information.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. Cindy or Ray, any, any questions to, I want to make sure you, you feel like you hear what people are asking about, or if you have any reactions?
So I'm taking some notes here, but the one thing I want to make sure I understand about the community listening, the community engagement and outreach, what, what we were suggesting is using the information from the superintendent search process at the front end to help write the goals and guardrails and then use the, and then have a process after you've written the goals and guardrails to take those out to the community and get feedback and input and, and collect the information from the community as to whether or not these are the goal, these are the right vision and values, the right goals and guardrails as far as really being reflective of, of community vision and values. So I just wanted to make, make that clarification so that I can understand if we are, if that is an okay way to go and that we would really be negating the first part, the community engagement A, as it's listed on that document. And you would be going out as board members to the community and doing other, whatever other ways you would choose to collect feedback, whether it be surveys, whatever. That'll be up to, that'll be a design process that we'll go through. But that would be the B section of community engagement.
My hunch, Cindy, is that there would be, I'll just speak for myself, like I, I think there's, I have some interest in doing both A and B, even though we did, I think, really good stakeholder engagement for the superintendent search. And my, my, my argument for continuing to do A and B is that just some time has passed. And we, we were asking questions about a superintendent search, which I think are related, very related, but also can be somewhat different from what do you most want to be true for your kids in terms of what they know and are able to do by the time they graduate? And we also have a new board that, that didn't participate as, as some of us did, but not everybody did. So in terms of co-owning the results of that community engagement, I can see, and, and I think, you know, we're not, we're not in a rush, you know, so, so take the time to do A and B. Though if people disagree with that, I certainly invite disagreement on that front. I got a shrug from Mike, but that, that's, okay. Ms. Bolton?
I think you would be extending this calendar if you did that. And I don't know that we want to extend it. I, 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 I kind of like the plan of using what we've already learned, at least to, as the platform that we jump off of and, and move, because this is fairly aggressive. But I know that it's, it doesn't serve us necessarily to make this any longer, because how is this actually going to impact our governance through the next budget process, through the next, you know, through the levy, through everything else? So I, I have confidence in the community stuff that we got, but I definitely believe we need to do more a little bit later into this. So I understand the A and the B, if you want to keep to this schedule. And I would also say, this is really about governance. This is not necessarily a strategic plan. So there's going to be a parallel process, it would seem to me, of this is about governance. I mean, these questions and this, what have you, versus a strategic plan. So I think we have to kind of figure out how that folds into it as well regarding especially engagement.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Is there anybody who hasn't shared anything on this front who wants to get a perspective in? Ms. Jones?
Yes. I was a little bit confused about the community engagement outreach A and B. Maybe I'm still confused. I actually believe that there was lots of very good information that we gauged from the superintendent's search, the community engagement process. And it's a lot to work with. I just reviewed all of it in preparation of our meeting tonight. So it struck me that there's lots of good information there. And I do agree with Ms. Bolton that there is definitely a difference in engaging the community for something that feels like, I don't know if I'm going to say this right, like preparing ourselves or self-evaluating ourselves and, which is all important, but, and then engaging in a strategic planning process for broader school goals. And I guess I'm thinking that the goals that we're talking about are goals for how we work together, how the board works with the superintendent, right, and her team. And so it could be broader than that, and if it is broader than that, you can please clarify that. And I hope I'm making sense.
Yeah. So the, the goals that we're talking about are the student outcome goals. So it would be the one to five overarching goals that you want your superintendent to accomplish in the next three to five years. And then from there, it would be up to the superintendent to create an implementation plan or a strategic plan in order to accomplish those goals. You would also have the guardrails that she would need to work within to do that. So the superintendent, you would be handing those goals to, goals and guardrails to her, to Dr. Wright, to, to implement and create a strategic plan that she would utilize to, to get there. And then, and then it would be up to her as far as any community, grass tops, whatever type of engagement that she felt necessary to, to collect for the actual strict implementation plan.
Did you get a chance to ask your question, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yeah. So let me, I will go to Dr. Moffett in one second. I think we're not, we won't spend forever here this evening. I just want to remind everybody what the wins were for the conversation tonight. I think win one was everybody gets a chance to ask clarifying questions about the proposal. Win two, if people have feedback on the proposal, get a chance to share it with Cindy and with Ray. We're not deciding on any of this tonight. What will happen next is we'll get an updated proposal based on the feedback that they heard. You'll get it and write it by email. And then we'll vote on that on this 18th. That's our next board meeting. So no decisions on any of this tonight, but if people have last feedback, they want to make sure that Cindy and Ray here are certainly happy to share that.
Well, I just wanted to, you know, this is a, this whole entire, entire process is a framework for us to use for us in speaking to other boards across the nation that are utilizing CGCS. You know, they, they implemented things differently. To that end, our board decided, and we talked about this a little bit last time, when we're, when you just brought up the strategic plan and, remember Bolton brought up the strategic plan, Cindy was very clear that that's supposed to be given to the superintendent, but we are choosing as, as a board, and you all did this before, to do that differently. So the community engagement for the strategic plan was led by the board previously. And we started the discussion last time in the governance training, that that was how you all historically decided to do that. It wasn't led, it was an ad hoc committee of the board. Is that right?
I think it was done differently in the past. Most recently, there was an ad hoc committee.
In the historical, historical past, it was done by the superintendent, but then it was led or it evolved to the board. So if that's how we are choosing to do it again, then we can vary how we're doing it, I'm sure, because again, this is just a framework. We can make it how we want to do it. But I'm just making that note that, that was, Cindy said something different than what you both just said, that the strategic plan, community engagement, you made a differentiation that that's not the goal and guardrail, community engagement. Is that right?
I, I'm just, I'm seeking clarification. I'm not quite sure how this is going to be structured. I'm not quite sure. I heard very clearly Cindy talk about how, about using the material related to community engagement that was used for the superintendent's search. I'm not quite sure what the connection is between the second phase and how we are, how we're going to engage ourselves and the community around that. I'm just not sure about that. And, and I used the, the example of the strategic plan only because I have just a different sort of understanding of what that means and what that looks like. But it's not, you know, engraved in my head that that's the way it's supposed to be. I'm seeking clarification about what it's supposed to be.
Cindy or Ray, anything you want to share with us before we say thank you?
Yeah, I think the, the most important thing is just to clarify that you're using the information, well, we are proposing, but you can do it either way you like. We are proposing that you use the information from the superintendent's search to build an initial draft of your goals and guardrails, understanding that those are reflective of the vision and the values of the community and that you collected some of that during the superintendent's search process. Enough that you can create a set of goals and guardrails to then take out to the community and say, here is what we are proposing for our goals and guardrails. And those goals, by the way, just to be clear, are the student achievement goals that you're setting for the district. Here's where we think the district should, should head. And then collecting feedback from the district extensively about those goals, those guardrails. Are these reflective of your vision? Are these reflective of the values, the things that you would expect students in our district to be, to know and be able to do? And that feedback process would then allow you to make adjustments if necessary to the goals and guardrails that you proposed. And then those adjustments would then feed into the final, final draft of those goals and guardrails that you would ultimately approve. You can do it either way. If you feel as though you don't quite have enough information from the superintendent's search process, and then you need to go back into the community to get additional clarification before you set the goals and the guardrails, then that is a, a step that you're more than welcome to do.
Thank you. I think, Mike, guide.
I'll be quick. Particularly, hello, everybody. Good to see you guys again, particularly since I will not be here July 18th. I think this looks great, by the way. So thank you all very much. And thanks for the self-evaluation as well, which I will get to you. I just, I want to throw out my vote that sort of is more in line with what Ms. Bolton said. This goes back to, you know, not to beat my, that mantra again, but the difference between input and feedback. And we have a lot of input that we got in the superintendent's search. And that, that stuff was not, those questions were not just about what kind of superintendent we wanted. And I agree with you, Mr. Lindy, President Lindy, that we didn't have three of these members up here, and I think that is extremely germane to this conversation. Yet I think if we were to go back and look at those questions, you would note that nothing in those questions was unique to the four people who were here before that. They are questions that, quite frankly, aren't maybe necessarily unique to Cincinnati Public Schools. But I think the second round, to Dr. Moffett's point, needs to be maybe more unique to Cincinnati Public Schools. There is no way, I just want to, one more echo, Ms. Bolton, there's no way we're going to do this in a year if we start that process over again. So my vote would be to use that as a, as a benchmark. But then, yeah, obviously, you know, do it again, but give people something, you know?
Thanks, Mr. Marosky. I want to be thoughtful about everybody's time this evening and, and keep us moving. I think, again, the wins for tonight were to give people a chance to ask questions, give people a chance to share feedback. If there are anybody who hasn't spoken and wants to share some feedback who hasn't yet, this is a last call? Okay. Now, different kind of last call, this last call for feedback. But, so Cindy and Ray, anything you two want to share before? Thank you for sharing some time of yours with us this evening. Anything you want to make sure you share before we end here?
No, I think, I think we've collected, or I've, I've been taking notes, and I will reach out to everyone just to see who needs some additional instruction on the self-evaluation and otherwise will make any adjustments needed to the timeline to be able to share that more detailed version very soon.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm hoping in terms of timeline that no later than next week, people could get a copy of the updated timeline, that they have a couple of weeks to read it and think about it before we come back on the 18th. And then we'll vote to approve a governance timeline for the next several months.
Yep. It shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you all very much. We'll catch you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy, thank you, Ray. See you soon.
Bye.
We are, going to keep us moving here. It's about 8:10, and we're going to move on to item G, which is a resolution approving additional students eligible for subsidy. And this is going to come from Dr. Moffett.
So I submit a familiar resolution approving additional students eligible for subsidy, which is a reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2021, 2022 school year. I submit it as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion, questions? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marosky? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. That is our only resolution tonight, folks. So we're going to move on to item H, which is from the superintendent of schools. Do we have retirements to announce this evening?
Weinberg? We do. Yes, we only have one, so I will be very quick. This is going to be our certificated personnel for retirement is Mrs. Amy D. Jones Harrigan. She is a school social worker from Hyde Park School. We just want to thank her for her service and thank her for all of her years, and we are wishing her the best in her future endeavors. So that is my complete list, one person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendations from the superintendent this evening?
Done, moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any discussion or questions on the recommendations from the superintendent? Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any discussion or questions on the recommendations from the superintendent? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marosky? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Do we have a we have a revised treasurer's report this evening? Do we have a motion to accept the revised report from the treasurer?
Don't move.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do we have any discussion or questions, Mrs. Weinberg?
I just have a quick question. I noticed on the revised copy, there was, I think something was removed from it. Just curious about the Cohere.
Yes, so we have started the process to go through and review all of the contracts. And so it's only removed for a short time for us to really have more conversation with them around the expectation for engagement moving forward. So we're hopeful that after we review it, we'll be able to bring it back to the July 18th meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Other questions about the treasurer's report, Mrs. or Ms. Bolton?
Yes, that's about tonight's contracts, right? It's not the ones that we approved previously. Okay. I just I don't know if it's not a question, but just some comment. This is about the coming fiscal year, Madam Treasurer. It's from starting now through the year.
That's correct. This is all the contracts that need to start as of July 1. So they need a pre date has to be of July 1 in order for them to start work.
And if I could, a question, are these year long or longer than years? I know it's for this one fiscal year, but are they part of longer contracts?
Some of them are, and that's why the format is different.
Right.
Trying to accommodate your request.
Right.
So let me just review this, explain it. And there is an addition. So the the document that you have in front of you, the ones that are highlighted in yellow, you've already approved, but I wanted you to see the years, right? And so what I'm showing you is the the department responsible, the contract number, the vendor, the timeframe and the purpose of the contract. And then the next couple of columns explain, like the first one at the top, Radio 1, it's a multi-year contract, and this is the first of three years. So it's one of three for $289,200, and it's being paid for out of the general fund. So for every contract, now, because this is new, not there is some missing information on some of the contracts, so we'll get better at it. But we just extracted this right out of the system. And so some there's a contract that you already approved for Alavue. In fact, that's our budgeting software. And that's year two of three years. So to answer your question.
That's I think that's very helpful for tracking it and us being more aware of it. I think that's great. And then the other piece that I would suggest is when we have, I think it was something for science equipment or whatever, I think the answer was multiple schools. It doesn't really help us kind of see which schools are getting what. Just from an equity piece, if we want to stay on the high level, I'm trying not to get down in the weeds about that. But the idea of this equity piece in showing differentiation, I think, would help us kind of track that perhaps.
Duly noted. In all fairness to everybody, I didn't tell them I was extracting exactly what they were typing. And so there's some graphical errors. So we'll give them a heads up about the level of public thought. And I just wanted to point out also that the ad, there was a mistake in the contract that prevented it from moving far enough along for me to extract it and include it. And that's on this single sheet of paper that's in front of you for JW Affinity. They're actually starting work on Saturday, so we really need to get this PO done. But I just want to make sure you were aware of the addition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other questions about the treasurer's report? Dr. Moffitt?
I like this tool. I like like this view. I gave you some feedback. I think it looks great. I have a couple of questions. So when we see it says like one of three, is that going to be, just to use Radio 1 as an example, they get that much every year? So if this is the second year, they got that much last year?
Right. So when they adopted the contract initially, that whatever RFP they used, they engaged in a three-year contract, but you have to appropriate it every year.
Okay.
Okay. And it's all subject to appropriation. So there's always clauses to terminate our relationship with a proper written notice. So just because we have a multi-year contract, doesn't mean you're you absolutely have to do it every year.
Gotcha. And my my other question, well, this, I don't know if this would, I don't know if this would be an assignment, but I'm going to ask it just because I don't know where it would fit. But when I look at all these contracts, I'm my mind goes to, how many contracts are we giving to minority suppliers? How many contracts are we giving to women suppliers? And so that and I would even say that are over $50,000 to our district. But, you know, we can, I know there has been a report that was like $100,000 or more. Is it possible to, on here in any way, maybe differentiate minority supplier? Put a put a M or a star, one star is minority, two stars is women, or something like that, so we can see? Or is there a report that already exists?
I there's there's the availability to track it in the system. We just need to make sure it's done with fidelity before we start reporting publicly because we don't want to misinform the public. But I will work with the purchasing department under the superintendent's office to get the data added.
Okay. And then with respect to like the Cohere contract, I saw that it had come off as well. Is there with is it is it possible to get an explanation of the RFP process? And how is it it only been posted? It looked like it had been posted for like 12 days. But how are how are we advertising for a diverse group of suppliers to be able to submit to our RFPs? Yeah, so in terms of thinking about the RFP process across the board, it does need to be revamped. We met with the the team that oversees that. It's actually been about two and a half, three weeks ago for those very same questions. The first question was how we are looking at and trying to track minority and women-owned vendors. I think in terms of the department right now, their focus has really just been putting the RFPs up, and they only currently go on our district site. So if you don't have an individual that's on the site that's looking for it, there's not an overall management system for where they find it. So we've had some conversation about other sites, search engines, if you will, that are specifically used for RFPs and RFP processes that we could engage in as an organization that we don't currently use. I think that's first. The second is, we started the process in working with the with the treasurer. One of the recommendations that I actually actually had for the team was around the additional contract position that you saw. Because on that, the reason that that I requested that we add that is because it will allow us to do some additional analytics that the team just doesn't have the manpower to do right now. And so in terms of doing that, you're then able to look at the RFP process, what you're getting in terms of contracting. We're beginning to add ROI into the contract. So we need a way to actually monitor that as well. And so that's what it would look like. For the the amount of time that the RFPs are up, it varies. And so there were, while Cohere was one that was asked about, there were several of the contracts that are included that were included this time that we were able to go back through again and, you know, pull those contracts for now so that we could do an additional review of them before bringing them back to you. So Cohere was one of them, but there were at least three or four, maybe even five others that we did the same with.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Other questions on the treasurer's report before we vote? Mrs. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. We've made it through our treasurer's report. We're doing pretty well. We're going to move on to the back of our agenda. I thought we passed it early. So as a reminder for folks who are watching, we've been trying to put at the beginning and the first part of our time together in what's called Part One. Topics that align to board priorities involve guests or the public or are required by law. And then as other topics come up, put them at the back, hoping that we can move through them at a reasonable hour, and I think we're doing great. So thank you. We I think the last part here, we had a question under Board Matters on committee restructuring from board governance training. Was that yours, Carolyn, or Ms. Jones?
It can be.
Was there was there? Well, was there a different board member? Who put it on there? I think. I can't remember. If you'd like to start, Mrs. Weinberg.
I think Ms. Weinberg did. I remember her doing that. Yeah.
So why don't we give Mrs. Weinberg the floor? Go ahead.
Really? Okay, I just wanted to bring up the conversation because I know that we talked about it. And I wanted to know what, you know, what would be the next steps moving forward in terms of restructuring for our committees. So that's my question.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I'm adding to what member Weinberg is saying. We've had some preliminary conversation about it. And I think I even mentioned to you just an idea about that that follows up, that followed up on what our discussion was in governance training. And I think the suggestion was because we don't have we don't have committee meetings in July, that perhaps we could utilize some time to kind of flesh this out. We don't have to flesh it out tonight, is what I'm saying, if we want to get out in time.
I think we're all on the same page there. But I also think I think it's good to we should have a time when we know we're going to work.
And now I do, I don't know if you want to hear my idea. I can wait until that time. But I did have some thoughts about that. But anyway.
I think for tonight, a good win would be just to check on the July idea. I know people have travel plans, other things may be going on. But would would anybody be opposed to the idea of adding day, something that's like cow length, like 90 minutes or so? Where we would, the whole purpose of that time would be to pick up on this discussion from the governance training about going from four committees to two and and really nailing a plan for what that would look like, the timeline under which that would take place. I propose that we bring Cindy or Ray or both of them and then do that in a 90-minute session sometime in July. Any any concerns with us doing that?
I don't have any concerns. I've just got summoned to jury duty.
Congratulations.
I don't know when I'm going to be available.
You did too?
You know, there will be some work we have to do.
They're in trouble.
There'll be some work we have to do to land a time, but I think we can we can solve that.
But yes, we'll work it out.
Ms. Bolton?
Kind of my ask of the administration, we we try to be off on July. I know we have to be meeting in policy because some of the things that are being discussed, we'd like to have the superintendent have an opportunity to open with some of that stuff done. But the the scheduled one is the 18th. Is that July 18?
That's a regular meeting.
Yeah, is there, would would administration be anticipating a significant, I mean, no presentations or whatever? Is it just to get the contracts through or, I mean, couldn't we
Build it?
Do it, yeah, do it kind of then unless they've got lots of work for us planned?
It's an interesting question.
I think for us, from what we've discussed so far, in terms of presentations outside of what the board has requested, there has been a presentation that's that was requested for athletics. So we can do it then, or we can do it at the first meeting that we have in August. Outside of that, there was not really a request for additional presentations. So it will be for contracts, and then it would also be for any hiring that we've done. So superintendent recommendation.
So I think what I'm hearing is if we can if we can pull it off to do it on the 18th instead of typical presentations, maybe we can get it done and not at a meeting. People like that idea? Brandon and Craig likes that idea a lot, I can tell.
That would be good.
Great. All right. Anything else on Board Matters, item one, the why is moving to two? Someone wanted to ask about Facebook Live for board meetings. Also, Mrs. Wagner.
Yes, I know that there was a discussion in the past at one of our meetings in terms of really trying to engage our community. I know I've gotten several feedback from families. It's very hard for them to download the Blue jean app onto their phone, whether they don't have storage or data. And so the question that I wanted to bring up to the board is, is there a way that we can just do Facebook Live as well with our meetings to engage?
That's a great question. I don't know what the answer is or.
So so we have to choose really, at this point, we'd have to choose one or the other because in terms of our platforms, we're not in a position where we could do both at the same time, is what I understood before. I'll ask the team to to share on that, share out on that. Jeremy, that would be a question for your team in terms of technology. Are we able to, when we asked that question before, we weren't able to do both of them at the same time or double dot broadcast? Maybe it's in this space. If that answer is no, if it's if that is incorrect, then we can do them both, then we can go ahead. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So it really would be up to the group, up to the group, whether or not we do that. I think now that I'm thinking about it, I think before it was that it was in two separate locations. So the resources, we were in one place for one thing, and then the team was actually at graduation. So it made it two different places. They couldn't double do Facebook Live at the same time. Okay.
And can I just add something into that, into the discussion, whether it's something that we can start for next year? That would be my question for the rest of the board.
I think that's great. I mean, anybody opposed to this idea? I don't, I don't see any problem. I think that's great. Good on that front? Move, great, moving on. Yes.
Sorry. I do want to clarify, though, that if they do participate via Facebook, they still cannot speak during speaking of the public. So they can view and watch, but their interaction would be limited.
Is there a way that they can put a question into the chat and have it answered or no?
Yes, from us, it would be depending on the format, the board would want to choose for that interact type of interaction because you normally don't respond back.
Right, exactly.
I think the other thing that I would also add there is, you know, the it doesn't, I think we really might want to consider using it as a as a tool for observation because it doesn't allow us the opportunity to give the notices for when you sign on, be able to clarify who signed on by a certain time based on policy for public comment. And so so being able to see it out there, maybe after the fact, we could go back and respond to the questions, but not having it be such that our stakeholders feel that they are going to be able to get those comments answered during the board meeting.
What if, Mrs. Weinberg, we requested that the administration put together a proposal?
And, perfect. I was going to suggest that because I think there is a way that it can be done. And I think there is a way that it can be done correctly and really utilizing our time in the chat feature as well. I know it's done in different school districts and different cities, so it can be done.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else on that item before we keep moving?
Just add the security piece of it, that, you know, you can't be kind of interrupted or disrupted. So there would have to be security about who can possibly intercede or interject or what have you.
Thank you. So I think we have one last item, which is under Board Matters for board meetings in the community and schools, which I believe is three for three for Mrs. Weinberg?
No, I'm going to actually let Board Member Jones talk about this because I know you have mentioned it before at a meeting. So I'm going to give that one to you. Is that okay?
That is okay, but it it's already been assigned.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah. It was assigned a couple of board meetings ago, or a few board meetings ago.
I didn't know if it was assigned or if it was just discussed or brought up. So.
I think I will give Ms. Ray a chance to share a perspective here.
Yes, so we have been working on it. I understand we want to start this in August. Well, we want to have it so that we're able to add it to our August agenda. And so we already have some some schools identified to share. We have had the conversation with technology around which schools would be the the best for us to do that resource with in terms of what we need to do in terms of the overall information. So we can have it available for the July 18th meeting unless we need it before then, so that we can get it attached to the agenda.
Sounds great. Thank you. So now ending just our last couple of items here, are there any inquiries or updates? I have one. Want to go? Okay. I I've brought this up in some finance committee meetings and probably some other settings too. But this this was going to be an inquiry for our treasurer. I truly can't recommend this certificate in education finance through Georgetown that I did. I've recommended it to all my board colleagues. It is it is doable with the allocation for board professional development. Highly, highly recommend. The question I had from Ms. Wagner, and doesn't need an answer tonight, was just, you are so thoughtful about developing leadership behind you for people who are coming up. Could do you see any kind of role for that program in the people who are coming up? And I wanted to leave this with you, and you feel free to answer it in an upcoming meeting, but I wanted to register the inquiry.
So one of my goals is to create that treasure pipeline. And so what I'm considering doing, well, I've already recommended some people to go through the treasurer's licensure class, and that's the other one that I'm considering. So absolutely.
That's great. Thank you very much. Any other? Any other inquiries or updates? Any assignments? Any kudos or announcements? Dr. Moffett?
I do, I, I didn't send Rob the pictures, but I had an opportunity to spend some time at Hayes Porter with the littles, the preschoolers. And I'll, I'll have the pictures for July, but thank you so much to Kimberly Trailerlow and the Early Childhood Team because they welcomed me, and I got a chance to have some STEM lessons with the littles. They had a robot. It was, when you see the pictures, you'll love it. But thank you so much to them because it was, it was really fun. But I apologize, I didn't get the pictures forwarded to Rob soon enough, but you'll see those soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Other kudos? Mr. Morosky?
First of all, Go Panthers, best neighborhood school in the city, Hayes Porter. Thank you. So in addition to that comment, I would like to give a huge kudos to all the teachers, particularly Amhali at Rose Lanu who organized the pride parade on Saturday. Our superintendent was there, and I have to say, it was really cool to see how excited people got when they saw the Cincinnati Public Schools banner, and then how even more excited they got when Brandon and Craig, my colleague, school board member Brandon and Craig was there as well, when we would point out superintendent Wright, they got even more excited when I pointed out new board member and finance committee member Brandon and Craig. And no, seriously, it was really, it was awesome. Students were along the parade route and say, this is a new superintendent, they want their picture. They were hollering, and so we look forward, we talked a lot on the parade route about doing it up real, real big next year. Our good friend, Rob Wilson, the man behind the screen, wins the award for best dressed. I'll, I'll leave it at that. You can check out his Facebook, but Rob's going to help us do it up next year. It was so much fun. My point is this, in all seriousness, there is a lot of toxicity in the world. Last week was a terrible week for progressive values and for the community and for black people and for gay people and for women. And to see how excited people got and the power in that when they saw Cincinnati Public Schools logo was really awesome. And so I just think everybody needs to know that. It was a really, really cool thing.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Mr. Craig?
I might tag on to Mike's kudos, but also give a little bit actually to the students who are out along the route, who were so excited to see some of their teachers and who were proud of being CPS students. I mean, it's sometimes we don't get enough chances to say that, and so it was really cool to hear them saying like they were so proud of us being there, even though the parade was at the very end. So that's a lot of dedication because they sat out there for like three hours in the heat just to cheer us on. And so in addition to all of us that were, that were organizing and walking, I really think it's really great to see the parents and the students who are along the path, who are there cheering us on.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, way to represent CPS. Thank you. And also the superintendent attending the Juneteenth March and Parade, so to speak, at Eden Park, which is now getting almost too big for Eden Park.
Yes.
But we, we all remember too, when indeed the Juneteenth folks wanted to make sure that we were doing the proper reading for the kids and the little, and the lower grades especially. So I think we want to make sure we keep that wonderful partnership. Finally, I had the privilege to talk about being, having great pride about something today. 10 people from four different states who are descendants of the Akin family had not